Number one, do you certify that to the best of your knowledge, number one, the town council in its closed session only discusses public business matters lawfully exempting from other meeting requirements under this chapter? And two, that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting, the closing meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the town council. Any member of the town council who believes that there was a departure from the protocols of clauses one and two shall so state prior to the vote, indicating the substance of the departure that any judgment has taken place. Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kedler?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Doughty?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stanley?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Fields?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gilmer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any action from council at this time? Any motion to adjourn the call of meeting? So, no? He said.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Harry, not like. This time we'll call a regular meeting, Lord. Mark, can you give our impatience, followed by our please for allegiance?
Heavenly Father, we get thanks for all the blessings in our life, Lord, and we're just so thankful for the opportunities that you've given us, Lord. Just pray that you guide us in all things, Lord, and that what we do will be the glorification of your kingdom and not our own, Lord, and that we submit to you in all things and glorify it all in the presence of Jesus and all in the name of Christ. Amen.
A please allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any items that need to be added to the agenda from council members that are not on here at this time? Do I have a motion to approve the agendas presented? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We've received minutes from our October regular council meeting and the call of meetings on October 21st through 28th. Everyone had a chance to review those.
All in the commission, approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We have received the council's payables. Mr. Mitchell, do you have any additions for the council tonight?
Mayor, I do have one addition.
Go ahead.
Got an email invoice from the sign shop.
Yeah.
For the Lemon High School sign.
Yeah.
The amount of $2,125.
All right.
That will be, material will be drawn down with downtown revitalization funds.
Good deal.
And I'd emailed you that invoice, Diane, this afternoon.
All right, so you want, you gonna approve the bills with that addition?
I'll do that, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We're now down to public requests. Have none?
You're with the government.
You're with the Bureau, okay. Well, I see you're up here. You're Miss Hurley.
I'm the nurse. I'm the band manager.
Okay. You're not Miss Hurley.
I'll make her the night.
Well, we have one of our employees with us here this evening who has decided to retire. Yes. And this time I'd like to enter this resolution for council approval. Jeff, good man. Appreciate your years of service with us, and we certainly wish you and your family the very best moving forward. Being retired, I can tell you I recommend you so enjoy it. Okay. Resolution expressing the consensus of the mayor, the town council, and town manager regarding the services of Jeff Sykes, wastewater treatment plant operator. Whereas Mr. Sykes served the town eleven for seventeen years from April 9th, 2002, to November 22nd, 2019, to his retirement. And whereas Mr. Sykes expressed effort, commitment, and dedication to the town eleven government body, employees, and citizens. And whereas Mr. Sykes devoted considerable time and effort to the betterment of the town eleven for its citizens, now therefore be resolved by the mayor, members of the town council, and town manager that Mr. Jeffrey A. Sykes be hereby commended for his service, commitment, and dedication. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution in recognition of Jeffrey A. Sykes be made a permanent part of the town eleven minutes on November 12th, 2019. That is, the resolution that I present to council, do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So, there is, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We need a picture.
Mark, two times.
Jeff, come on up front, though. Listen. Can y'all gather behind me like we normally do? Please.
And the usual water. And the usual slots.
Hang her chair away from him.
It ain't hurt bad. You tell Swin, you gonna have to camp out here, Mark.
All right, I'm gonna count to three. One, two, three. All right, I believe I got you.
One time?
Three pictures.
Jeff, put them in. So you take this in the box? I'm sure it's warm.
Thank everybody for the best job they've had in my life, and I kinda hate to leave, but if anything comes to Ian, I recognize it.
We appreciate you.
We appreciate you. Thank you, appreciate it. I would have spent some time with my kids. See you all about next Tuesday.
I appreciate you.
I'm not so sure they want him.
You all right, sir? Just remind everybody.
We're making anything.
So, we're gonna be at the shop next Tuesday? I believe. What, 11:30 or something?
Yeah.
Is that right?
I'll send the union now before.
had to pass this, is that what you need to occur?
We request that, and this will go along with the complete count committee to help assure that we get a hundred percent response rate, which equals federal funds, of certain importance, and we sure appreciate your cooperation.
Y'all want me to read this when you press me to need to pass it? I'm not hearing anything.
Too much reading.
Here we go. Proclamation. Whereas every ten years, Article 1, Section 2 of the United States Constitution mandates account of all people living in the United States and its territories. And whereas 2020 census will address every household in the nation with a simple questionnaire with the goal of counting everyone once, only once, and in the right place. Whereas data obtained by the survey will be used to determine how approximately $675 billion will be distributed from the federal government to state, local, and tribal governments annually. And whereas up to $2,000 of federal funding will be lost for each person not counted, as well as upwards of $20,000 of federal funding lost over ten years. And whereas a complete count requires that we bring together leaders from all communities of the Commonwealth, so that every Virginian, regardless of racial, social, or economic background, is counted. And whereas Governor Ralph Northam has established the Virginia Complete Count Commission, which is comprised of forty members to collaborate with community partners and local complete count committees to ensure an accurate 2020 census count. Now therefore be it resolved that the town eleven hereby proclaim April 1st, 2020 as census awareness day. And I need a motion to approve this proclamation at this time.
All in the commission.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Can you do that?
I'm like, we just copied. Can you copy? Yeah. You wanna, I can get that later or take it in, that way at the end of the meeting. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all. Okay, we're down to our town manager, chief of police report.
Basically, the one I had to report was we handled in closed session, other than Jeff question on chief of police report.
Anything from the council members from Mr. Mitchell? Our town attorney report, have we received it?
I think I've given you all I needed, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, no new business. Any committee reports?
I do.
Okay.
On the Thanksgiving dinner, we have signed up with, to get, to get our account, to give the food ordered, and so it will just be delivered to Lemon High School. They went ahead and did that order. It's gonna be delivered to Lemon High School. It's gonna be $3,162 for that food. We do have $5,000 coming from Walmart and probably another $1,000 coming from Walmart. But what will need to happen is that the town will have to pay this bill, and then we'll be getting the donation back of that $5,000. But I just wanna let you all know that that's, we got signs out, we got announcements out, flyers out, parks did that for us, and then with the food, and then the things that are being donated, the, with the money, it's all gonna be covered. But you're gonna see some money, it's gonna be paid by the town, but the money will come back to the town.
It's kinda like we're friendly and getting reimbursed, is what pretty much kinda works.
Yeah. It's gonna be paid for with, through donations, but there might be a little gap.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? The Christmas ad, I think y'all met too, didn't you, Mary?
Oh, yes.
I lost some fun.
Yes.
I'll let you do that. Can you talk about, and when you talk about that, could you mention the ad if it's all right to use that too?
So, the same, the same ad that we ran last year is okay, we just changed the date. I think that Heather said she has several coming in for trees. Do you remember how many?
Fifty, as of today.
Fifty.
We got fifty cut from actions.
Fifty trees.
Which is higher than last year.
It's more than last year.
Yes, I read more.
I thought we had sixty some last year.
I thought we did.
It was forty-eight, wasn't it?
I thought sixty, tell us where.
No, that's not.
No, we got sixties.
But we need.
I think that included the ones that we picked at the park.
We're still doing those, too.
Correct.
So, we've got the trees coming in. She is going to need that by Friday, have everybody to reserve their trees by Friday. We are, she has been in touch with Santa Claus. He is gonna be inside this year, just because it was so vertical last year. Angie is working, Angie is working to get the vendors and the food trucks there. We also talked about a DJ that'll have festive Christmas music. And we have another meeting next, next Monday.
She wants everybody to have their trees by this Friday?
By this Friday.
List, so you can get them. Cause if they, they're delivering by Monday or Tuesday.
By the fifteenth.
And they hope by Monday or Tuesday, I think this, not that.
Yeah. So she wants everybody who wants to reserve one to have it reserved by this Friday.
She'll get some more.
I didn't bring, I didn't bring my notes with my things to do. But that flyer is, is okay, and she is making all the other contacts, and then Angie is doing it. But we wanna try and keep everything. We talked about having everything in one area, and that's why we're gonna bring Santa Claus in and maybe have those fire pits, fire pits there. Will the patio be finished?
A little more for you. Whether it's gonna keep doing much, she thinks.
Right.
I hope so.
We might have to block off some of that parking lot, that, if that patio is something, we might have to close down.
You got, what, three weeks, right? Do you want the trees laid out the same as we did last year?
I would like to. I would like to. She had mentioned to me about doing a new design, but I really don't wanna do a new design. I'd like to keep that.
It's so primitive.
And then I can contact Justin, like a chip again, well, or maybe President can do some journalizing.
This guy's a senior.
Yeah, just journalize some things. So maybe you'll just need to contact President, like, I'm sorry, I've been with it.
Be great.
That's my conclusion.
Is that it? Any, anything else?
They're gonna have to be decorated, I would say, what date?
Before, anything, before, we want them done before Thanksgiving, because parade's the money act of Thanksgiving. Which is only basically giving out about two weeks from the time they arrive.
Mayor, I got a committee report for downtown revitalization.
Okay.
I'd like everybody to turn over to the information portion of their agenda packet.
I haven't.
Is that what you're looking at this?
In the agenda packet?
Yep, under information. You should have like a, a little rendering from Nathan Brown.
Uh huh.
This is what he provided. We had asked Nathan, I think maybe the mayor and Mark, and then I followed up with Nathan on what we could do with that median down there in the, starting in the historic district just past the gateway in front of, where the gateway's gonna be in front of Family Drug. And we've asked Nathan to kinda come up with some concepts of some landscaping there as well, and I think we got a couple quotes on saw. We're gonna saw it instead of seeding that, so it'll be ready for the parade. I think the cost was under $300. It's not counting us going to pick it up. So it's reasonable to get that sawed, and that should be installed, I think, this week. Is that correct, Mark?
I picked up the saw today, so we're the permitted.
Okay. And this was, this is the concept that Nathan provided that matched our secondary signs and our entryway signs in other areas of town and in our downtown area. Basically, it's the, some boxwoods and hydrangeas and there's a couple spots, like there's a manhole down there as you start into our downtown revitalization project area, the historic district, and you'll see it on there. Nathan was just, he thought it'd be a good idea to provide some enhancements to that area. I think he tried to incorporate some crape myrtles after talking to the mayor and talking to Deanna in the past, and you'll see those on, you'll see there's four trees in there. But anyway, this materials can be taken out of the downtown revitalization funds. We have approximately $80,000 in street scape funds left over after the highway lighting, where we could not use those funds for labor, we could use them for materials only. And this was one of the, this is one, this is a proposal for some of those funds, but it'll be material only. So Nathan needs the okay for this or not the okay for this. If you remember, we've already okayed the signage for, on just above Burns Avenue going out of the downtown area for a thank you for well, for visiting downtown Lemon. I think the mayor had a couple of those concepts, and we, we looked at those and approved that. So that's something we, that will have the same landscaping around it also, that, that can be installed at the same time as this. And I don't know if this'll be spring now, I don't know, that's something that's, that I'll have to check with Nathan, but I would like to get that approved to let Shane know so he can, where he's administering the downtown project to move forward with that. Second of all.
You wanna, you, uh.
Sure.
You want a motion on that?
I don't mean a motion on that.
Everybody good with proceeding on? Go ahead.
I was gonna ask Mark if we could, soon as we secure the theater, if we could get a survey done on it, if that happens before our next meeting, if you don't care to, to get a survey on theater, that, that will be necessary for, for main route to start their phase one design or floor plan, I guess, they're gonna make. And we'll probably need to know anyway. My question is, Mark and Kim, you may be able to tell me, but is that alleyway goes all the way from Main Street to Virginia? Is it Virginia Avenue? What's?
It's Virginia.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It goes on like.
Flags and banners. The, we need to order flags if we need them for the new pole lights. I don't know if it takes the same size flags as our other pole lights. If it does, that's good, if not, we can order new ones. And banners, we need to be thinking about what kinda banners you wanna see on those new historic lights. You know, traditionally, there's seasonal ones, there's one, we'll probably do one maybe for our, our music festival, but one up for that. But that's just something that the council needs to think, think about. This might be legal, but I, if Kevin and Mark, y'all stop me if you don't wanna talk about it, but the signs at the Old Mill Park, Mr. Farmer that has the property on the far side of the Old Mill Park that has the, the signage in the yard, is that correct, Mayor and Mark? Is that in violation of our, of any ordinance that we have in the town, Mark?
The, they're not, they're not permitted. They, they never got permitted.
He wants you to put him up on the sign, or something, Mark.
I don't think they do that.
He did have a discussion with us, with the mayor and I, to see if there was any funds that he could get to put in better signs from the revitalization. It is inside the revitalization area. Put a, put an aesthetic sign that would blend with the, with what, what you're doing in the downtown revitalization. Possibly moved to another location.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I feel like those signs need to be removed until approved by permit from the town of Lemon. So I don't know how we go about, is that something that legal needs to handle, is that something that we let the town manager handle, and is that something that the majority of the council feels the same way about? To me, it was, to me, they're a nuisance, and I felt like that we, I remember there was even some rendering made to see what we could do to, to help work with the, the sign, the property owner, the sign, the property owner who wanted the signs, and I don't think that we were able to get those covered in our grant funds, if, if that's correct, Mayor.
Kim, does that start with Mark or you?
Yeah, man, if it's in violation of an ordinance or without a proper permit, I mean, I think you send him a notice that he's in violation and is cease and desist violating ordinance, I guess.
So the discussion with Mark and Mayor, you all not come up with any things that can help them?
Well, I think, it's like Scott said, we had a rendering, I think, trying to put, once you got three businesses, flags there, there's three. And I don't know where it is now, but there was a design with historic lettering, with black poles. That's, but that is as far as it's gotten. There hadn't been any, I think they were trying to determine if we can use any of that materials money for that, or if he could pay for it. But regardless, the sign would have to be the dimensions that are in the policy, so.
So, make sure I understood, Mr. Gummer, the revitalization funds won't, we won't be able to get any revitalization funds for his signs?
That's my understanding after talking with Shane.
Okay. On the material side, we could, I was thinking about that lady that you mentioned.
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right.
Do you want me to confirm with him, or you feel very comfortable?
I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Okay. Good to hear.
Kim?
I wonder, with the street lights, can you see if there's any way possible, we can make four or five more lights down there and make a meeting?
We gotta meet tomorrow.
They come progress meeting tomorrow. They can come. I think me and Scott talked and looked at it. I believe if the big poles in the way, they can come off of them poles, probably or hook them up instead of doing all the underground stuff. You see what I'm saying? On the right, left side going down, they go all the way to the level lots. On the right side, they stop at Carter Bank, like, if, if there's even one to look back at.
Well, yeah, I mean, and the good thing is, I, I think Jim and Jason both are coming for progress tomorrow.
Can you talk, do you ask them about it?
We can ask them, sure.
Can you ask them?
Yeah, we will do that. And we also, I'm gonna, we're gonna ask them again about the power, that black pole there in front of Carter's Bank.
Aye.
Where that power supply is, or the meter box, or the meter is that they put up. I'd like to ask them again about that, what options are, if they could relocate that or put it underground. I don't know what to, that's in a world of, I don't know what all utilities are down that guys strip there, I'm not sure. But I would like to ask them about that tomorrow, too. What's everybody's pleasure on the sign of Old Mill, on what the ratio? Kim, what do you want?
About the same time, Mr. Taylor, say, do anything knows about getting permit and everything, getting permit.
Yeah.
That's, I thought he said that one time he talked with me, like, it had already been cleared or something.
Oh, no. It never got cleared.
He didn't have it cleared, though.
No, it was just discussed about.
Okay. So he knows that, he knows this.
Well, I will say, in his mind, he may think it's clear. You, you.
Tell me.
Okay. Mary?
Yeah.
Don?
I don't know, I guess. Yes, anyone?
Okay. Scott?
All right. Did everyone else, just for info in there, this report from the, excuse me, Bruton about our giving back campaign through the year, it's right behind the renderings, I ain't got that, what was that? It's right behind the renderings.
It is right down here.
You're kidding.
Yeah.
I didn't get that test. You didn't get that, you're all pulled out of chain. Okay. Thirty-one hundred and twenty-eight items.
Yeah.
I didn't get that this time.
You didn't get that, you're all full of change. Okay. Thirty-one hundred and twenty-eight items, pervasive twenty-eight hundred dollars. Okay.
The last, the last concert we had, we probably got more food that day than we did all the others put together.
Probably did. Correctors full.
Jim Watson?
Jim Watson and Mo Mano got more than they did on the rest, I'm all the other. Anything else?
I've got a question for Mark. The, on the, I probably should've brought this up earlier, sorry I did not, but on the accounts payable, the treasurer of Russell County, construction debris is twenty-one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and treasurer of Russell County debris is fifteen thousand one hundred and nine dollars and eighty cents. Was that from debris, I guess, at the pool?
No, some of it was, and some of it's from, is built back out to like Burger King. So, it's built thus, so they'll take it, and then we have to build the individual and collect it back from, from there.
Oh, it's renovation of Burger King.
Right.
They fixed that place up.
Got you, brother. Yeah. Okay, I just wanna follow up, I know that the county was willing to work with us on our community project.
Right, it was, now that costs, it did. Previously, our trucks were going down there and getting turned away 'cause it wasn't being paid, so now we're paying and then collecting from the, because that way we don't have to make two and three trips down there with.
Fair enough.
Construction debris.
Thank you.
If you could, look at your calendars or, I'd like to have a, events, by Centennial Events Committee meeting next Wednesday or Thursday. Can you do it on Wednesday, Scott?
Wednesday, the twentieth?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Doll?
What time?
What time? It's five o'clock, okay, sir?
Yeah, five o'clock, I mean.
Yeah, do you have?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary?
Five o'clock.
The Wednesday, the twentieth.
And we'll get a notice.
Yeah.
And it's for events?
Yeah.
And this will cover Thanksgiving, this will cover Thanksgiving, Christmas?
And discussion about this twenty-twenty.
And that'll have, because that'll, we'll have a Thanksgiving meeting and a Christmas meeting.
Before then?
That one day.
Oh, good. Let's see, we need to take action regarding personnel item, I believe, related to the wastewater plant.
You're correct.
Need to.
Make a motion, we move Lester, what's your name? Ben Holmes, full-time effective November, uh...
Twenty-second?
Twenty-third?
Twenty-second is just like state.
Okay, so twenty-fifth would be that next Monday.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side.
I make a motion, we adjust salary as discussed.
Okay.
Don't be with that pink period.
With the same, with, with the new, with the...
With the other glowing.
With the, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Oh, Doll, Mary, you need a second.
I'll get a second.
Motion's second, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. Can any, any other business to come forth, council, city?
Um, the, under the information, this is just our time schedule for the gymnasium?
Is that right, Mark?
It's pretty, yeah, that's, that's J.A. Streets that they had in our uptown meeting. We're, we're pretty close, everything's going pretty well.
I suppose, not close, are they?
Pretty close.
Okay.
Is the lead fixed?
Aren't they busy?
We think so.
Okay.
We thought so, they were there.
But they've been there here.
They came back again.
Okay. Any other business to come forth, council? Hearing them, have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side.